All right, we're going to call this committee to hold to order on March 6. We've got two items on the agenda. The first one is risk management 502 insurance review with Kelsey. Take it away.
Oh, thanks. Well, good evening. My name is Kelsey Urban. I'm the risk manager for the city. And it is a pleasure really to take you guys through the review of the 502 insurance fund for 2022. There is a lot of information that I'm going to share with you, so I will move through efficiently, but also there will be time for questions. And please do interrupt if there's a clarification or a question you'd like me to answer. I want to start off by talking about the big picture here. So for the 502, we typically, you can see the last five years of expenditures out of the fund. This last year was over $4.3 million. It marks a 12% increase over the last year. And the year before that, it was a 7% increase. So higher expenditures and we're going to talk about why and what comprises all of those costs. So the 502 insurance fund has four main categories of costs and expenditures. The first one is a big category. It's our claim losses for workers' compensation, unemployment liability claims, and then property damage comes out of the 502. The second category is our premiums for insurance. So that's both our straight up insurance policies as well as our excess policies that we carry. And then there are administrative expenses to running the fund, including defense litigation. And then the last category here actually flows into the 502. So those are recovered funds that go back into the 502 fund. So I'm going to break each one of those down and talk about some details about each. So when we're talking about claims and losses within, we're talking about within our self insured layers. So for workers' compensation, that's up to $750,000. For all employees except police, for police, it's 1 million. That is driven by the industry and that's the lowest that we were able to get due to higher cost, higher frequency of higher cost claims for injuries for police. For liability, we carry a self insured retention of up to 300,000 and the losses are covered underneath that those layers. And then that same is true for auto and then property. We do have an insurance policy, but we cover the claims or damages to city property below the deductible $50,000. So taking you through each one of those workers' compensation is statutory as a requirement and it is managed by LNI or directed by LNI, Labor and Industries. This is mainly managed by HR benefits team and through a third party administrator called Everly Vivian. We talked about the self insured layers there and excess insurance begins above that 750 and 1 million. And this is a 100% employer paid benefit. So what does that look like for what expenditures are coming out of this fund for 2022 and 2021? You'll notice they're quite a bit higher. So last year we saw over $592,000 in 90 claims. You might note that that 90 claims is a jump up from the year before. We do have, we had 58 COVID claims. Now, the previous two years, we had an admin code and leave that we were giving employees and that ended at the end of 2021. And then those claims transitioned to workers' compensation. And so that's accounts for a large percent of those claims that you're seeing in that larger number. The dollar amounts being higher is due to several large claims that we did pay out. The one from 2022 specifically was an injury from 2011 that just had higher costs in 2021. Unemployment also out of the 502 fund. This is managed by the HR labor division and is 100% employer paid. Got a graph on the screen here showing you those costs. In 2022, we had seven claims for unemployment. The year before it was 31, so fewer claims. And it totaled just over $21,000. For property, we are insured for property, but we do experience losses below our deductible of $50,000. And so the 502 would would account for those losses and we'd pay for those out of this account. That is managed by the risk management division and we do have insured property of over $381 million. This gives you an idea of the history of loss for the last five years. You will see that it's quite a bit higher here in 2022. We had over 656,000 dollars in losses. And in 2020, it was quite a bit lower at just over 35,000. And so a couple of reasons for that, one is that we did have large losses in 2020, but supply and other issues had those repairs actually, they were actualized in 2022. And that's why you're seeing those costs being higher. Additionally, we are seeing just costs in general going up of construction and repair. So a couple of things happening there to account for that higher number. For liability losses, again, below our self insured retention layer of $300,000, we cover losses out of the 502 fund. And that is managed by the risk management division. Liability really refers to damages from third parties that are either to injury or damage their property. So what are we talking about when we say liability claims for the city? We have, we had 65 in 2022. The five year average is 60. It is a little bit lower than it was prior to that dip in 2020 where we had some pandemic related fewer activity in general and fewer liability costs that occurred that year. I want to add here that we settle about 30 to 40% of the claims that we receive. So just because we're seeing 65 claims here for 2022 does not indicate that we are liable for all 65 of those claims. A better indication would be how many we we settle. And so those are the numbers of claims. What does that translate into for dollars? And for 2022, it was over half a million dollars. It was 543,208 dollars. A big chunk of this was actually defense costs. Over $270,000 of this is defense costs. We really had a large year of settling lawsuits in 2022. It was a good year in that way. We settled five different lawsuits. We'd received a great question prior to this presentation. So I added a couple, well, a slide here for auto costs and just to explain a little bit more and go a little bit more in depth. So the total number of claims that we settled in 2022, so you might look at this and say, wait, why are you seeing saying 71 claims when we saw it was 65 that we received? These are the number of claims that and lawsuits that we settled in 2022. And of those, 50% about were motor vehicle accidents. And that's historically true. Each year we see about 50% of our claims involve automobiles. The settlement costs for motor vehicle accidents was $146,000. The average cost of those, all of the claims was $4,067. For those that we accepted liability, the average cost payout for an auto claim was $12,202. Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm curious as far as the type of motor vehicle accidents that's typically seen, is it a a city vehicle like, I don't know, a street sweeper, side striding a car? Is it more police vehicle and that sort of thing? I've seen, I've seen some of these things on the little reports we get. What, two part question, what typically is it and what do we do about it or, you know, to maybe mitigate some of these things or that just pretty much, hey, that's just the way it is and?
It's never just the way it is. There's always something that can be done and it's important to do, to take action when we see trends. And so I could get you a breakdown if you're interested afterwards of, of the different departments or divisions and those motor vehicle accidents. We see across the board losses for where we're unfortunately, we are, our city employees are liable for some of these accidents. We do see police vehicles that rear end other vehicles or back into things. It does happen. You mentioned sweet street sweepers. We actually had two street sweepers back into motor vehicles. One, actually, those are this year. So it wouldn't be in this data for 2022, but here's a great story for you. So, you know, we met with the streets, public works streets team and asked, you know, what do we think is going on here that two street sweepers had a backing issue? So we ended up adding huge signs to the back that said, please stay or not, please, it just said, stay back 50 feet, 100 feet. I can't remember what we landed on with the right number. And they were proud to send us the photos afterwards and say, okay, yeah, here's, you know, here's what we've done. And I am expecting that to have an impact. People were following too close to our street sweepers and they couldn't be seen. Yeah. So great question. There are other things that we look into when we see trends like that. And I'll get you a breakdown of kind of what we're seeing, which departments, divisions that mainly experienced the accidents.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Yes. So they are total 71 claims into 24 for automobiles, right? How many automobiles? And you don't have to answer this question because probably you don't have that top of your mind, out of your head. How many automobiles, how many cars we we have as a city?
Oh.
If you don't have to answer, I will.
Off the top of my head, but I will also get that number to you. It's a good question. It does impact the number of accidents we have. How many are on the road? Yes.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I would point out about this slide before going on is the that the number, so that 146,000 in 2022 made up about 54% of the costs. So that second pie graph that you're seeing. So it is a large area of liability and it is a large cost area when we're talking about our claims. Now we've gone through that first category of expenditures. Now we're in the second one. It's another big one. These are the premiums for our insurance and excess insurance lines that they come out of the 502. So you're seeing on the screen, all of our policies. Oh, the, the big ones are the liability policies, property, flood, earthquake, excess workers' compensation and some others, including airport and cyber that we carry. The biggest cost is the premium for property. So in 2022, we paid in our premium $938,000 over that amount. It was a 24% increase from the year before. So and the year before that, we saw a 35% increase. This is driven by the market and it is not due to any losses that the city has suffered. In fact, the only loss that we've suffered was we might see in this renewal in our July one renewal was we were, we recovered $20,000 from our insurance agent insurer. So this is purely market driven and we are expecting it to go up again. A similar story, not quite as severe for liability premiums, but we're also seeing that that is a very hard market as well. The graph that I have here is just, it's outdated information, but it's really just to show you that trend. I include it to, to really give a visual on how the top 50 US verdicts as of 2018, and you can see how steep this curve is. It was over $54 million, the top settlements. 50, the top 50 median average. So just the huge payouts, nuclear verdicts that we're seeing and insurers need to make sure that they are recovering costs of what they're paying out. And so in 2022, we paid $463,000 and it was an 18% increase from the year before. And I want to say again that this is market driven. It's not because of losses that we experienced. In the last five years, we had, we were reimbursed $104,000 from our insurer. So one, one loss in the excess layers. The third bucket is our administrative expenses and these are another expenditure out of the 502 budget. We have a broker with its alliance insurance services. They are outstanding, I will say. And we've been with them since we became self insured in 2016. Their costs are $21,415. That's how much they cost in 2022. It was a 2% increase. The previous year was another 2% increase and the two years prior to that were 0% increases. So very stable and favorable rates. We do estimate that they, because of their bargaining power and their ability to group large insurance policies, they save us in our premiums far, far more than what they, they cost for their broker fees. Another cost is our claims management for the liability claims. We have a third party administrator, Carl Warren, and in 2022, 21% of those claims were sent out to the third party. And in-house, we, we settled, settled about 80% of those claims, saving some costs to the city by doing it that way. And those costs totaled $9,184. So very relatively low cost for their services. Different story on the next one. Litigation defense costs were higher this year. 270,770. So that was up 118% from the previous year. I do say that though, with that same attachment to those five closed lawsuits. So there was a reason for those to be higher. And then two lawsuits do remain open at this time. And then lastly, a really important cost is investing in our people and their safety. And that does, as we know, pay dividends. Firstly, taking care of our people, but also in cost savings for, for claims. And then the last bucket, it is the one that comes in the positive direction is subrogation. So when we do have damage to city property, we have in risk management, we manage going after those funds from those third parties that caused the damage and recover those. It isn't a hugely favorable number. If you look at it, 50% of the costs we recover. That seems rather low, but there are reasons for that. And it is a very involved process that is time consuming. This portion of the, this process is owned and managed by our senior risk risk management analyst Krista Colas, who is brilliant and does a terrific job managing this fund. On average, we bring back about $100,000 recovery. And in the last five years, it was just under half a million dollars that were recovered. I've got an asterisk here for 2022. So far, we've recovered $57,288. But that number goes up every day. There's a three year statute of limitations and oftentimes it takes the full three years to know what damages, repair the damages, have those costs and then be able to collect them. So we do use that three year statute. We're still collecting on those last two lines. So two more slides for you guys. I like to go through our top concern areas just to keep these on all of our radars. These are important risk exposures for us to manage. And so the aging subsurface infrastructure is something that is can be a challenge and important to stay on top of. As you know, we have hundreds of miles of water mains that are 100 years old under our streets. And the, a problem is that we don't know that there's an issue until they have burst or issue of, have a problem. And so that is something that remains on our radar as a, as a top concern and area of liability. Police liability by the nature of the work that we do, we know that that is a higher risk job. Joint and several liability is a Washington, it's Washington state legislature where if we are found 1% liable, we may be on the hook to pay 100% of that bill if the responsible party is unable to pay. Additionally, Washington legislature does not have a cap on liability payouts or settlements. And then the last one is managed brilliantly by our, our city clerk and Melissa McCain, specifically among others, the public records violation, the public records exposure and making sure that we stay on top of managing that concern in each one of these. So just some additional information to remind or share with you, we did exit the Washington city's insurance authority risk pool in 2016. So it's been over seven years. We have saved money by doing so. We continue to save money. The estimate is that over $200,000 a year are saved just in the premiums alone. And I do have a comparison point for you on this one. So in 2023, we just renewed our liability insurance and our premium went up about 15%. WCIA did see a 40% increase in their members premiums. Administrative cost savings as well. And then not to be discounted, the control of the liability and the settlements that we, that we make and the defense council that we hire is something that gives us more control and more ability to manage those costs. It does involve, it does require increased involvement by the city attorney's office and partnership, but we do hire outside legal defense as we did with WCIA. And then lastly, a reminder and always important that key to all of these savings are the risk management strategies, risk mitigation, including safety. With that, what questions may I answer for you?
Questions from counsel? Mr. Albersen?
Kelsey, when it comes to the litigation, obviously that's some, some big numbers. Are there some commonalities in the cases that end up going to litigation and, and at least maybe end up being more the high, high dollars? As far as, you know, who it is or the cause or that sort of thing?
Probably the, yes, I would say that automobile accidents remained a high area of liability. So I think I'd have to look back and see just the ones I'm recalling in my head right now were, three of them at least were auto accidents.
And I mean, where, where somebody says, oh man, I can, I can get a lot of money out of this. Or was there some kind of egregious factor that makes some people more, like, I guess the commonality that I'm looking for is, hey, you know what? A subset of people say, okay, settlement, gotcha versus litigation, anything that, that has been noticed, once again, that maybe if it's pulled out, that can be addressed or mitigated or anything like that. And maybe not, I don't know, but.
I think we are seeing in general a society that is more open to litigation than 10 or so years ago and before.
I like how you said that, open to litigation. Versus pursuing and getting as much money as they can. Yes, okay.
We, we, you know, I don't think that we have seen large opportunistic type lawsuits that, you know, our settlements have been, you know, they haven't gone into our insurance layer. This, the one that did was a slip and fall. And so and then I'm thinking of, we had a settlement in mediation that settled for $99,000. He did have a damn injury. And so you know, I think that that was in mediation, we were able to settle on that amount and both parties walked away, you know, feeling like, like it was an outcome that was reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Counselor Perez?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, representation. I have I, 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 I'm trying to understand why you identify your top risk concerns, these four ones? Is because the amount of money that that implicates them and from your four top risk concerns, I understand the risk of aging surface infrastructure and as well as the police liability. But if you can give me a better example of the joint and several liability and the public records violation and if this monetary impact, I would like to know more why you recognize those as the top risk concerns.
I think those four are good to talk about because we haven't, it wasn't addressed in any of the claims or lawsuits that we see that we went through on the presentation. And those are concerns that potentially it might be out of our control in some ways until, until they happen. And they are ones that we need to stay on top of what we can do to mitigate. So for the public records act violations, that might be a good question for Jason, but to my knowledge, we haven't had one payout in at least since I've been here for the five years that I've been. I'm sorry, that really put him on the spot, but.
It's probably been about, I want to say about probably 10 years since we paid out. And I think the main concern with the public records request is that there's, there could be no, there's no insurance. You can't buy insurance to pay for the, whatever the cost might be for the violation. And, and it's really up to the court, you know, we've seen, you know, other jurisdictions get charged anywhere from or fined, I guess, to a million dollars or more. And so that's, I think the main concern is that you know, if there were a violation, we just don't know how, how egregious, you know, it could be. So, but we've worked really hard not to have any violations.
Thank you, Jason. I didn't know that could be up to a million dollars in the public's violation.
It could be, it could be even more. I mean, there's no limit really. It's really set by the court and precedents from other cases. And I think the recent one was about text messaging, but we're capturing text messages now. So.
And for the joint and several and the no cap on, on liability settlements, it's a similar story where we you know, not only does it impact what we potentially would pay out. So I think it was last year or the year before, there was a billion dollar settlement for a loss of life. So that's $1,000 million. And so not having a cap on settlements for Washington state does put a burden on those that are trying to be insured. We had two large carriers leave our market. They withdrew from the Washington market because they weren't willing to take on the risk. So, so those are, they, that does impact how we, how we approach the risks.
Any other questions before we move on?
Real quickly, you answered one of my questions early on, but it caused another question. The workers comp, you know, obviously the 90 claims in 2022, but you said that about half of them, 40, 50 were from COVID. But COVID people catching it on the job? And that, that was
well, so.
definitively shown? I mean, that's interesting.
We have presumptive exposure for police officers, for first responders. So that was a, a Washington or federal law. And so those, some of those claims are quarantining. So we might have, if seven police officers were quarantining, those might be captured in that claim. And then so I think the majority of those are likely from quarantine and lost time. And a couple, of course, did have COVID and they were presumptive at work exposures. Yeah.
We're going to move on. Thank you so much. Kelsey, next up is the retirement savings and health insurance plan review. Erica?
Hi, yes. Hello, council members. I'm Erica Edens and I'm the benefits manager for the city. And I've been in this role as the benefits manager for one year now, actually coming up in about two weeks from now. So I am really pleased to be here tonight and give you a presentation. We'll do an overview of the retirement savings and the health insurance plans. And we'll start with a review of the deferred compensation plan. So in addition to the participation in the pension plans that run through the state department of retirement systems, the city provides an additional opportunity for our employees to save for retirement through a 457 deferred compensation plan. And that's a multi employer plan that we And that's a multi-employer plan that we run jointly with, uh, with the Renton Regional Fire Authority through a cooperative agreement between the two agencies. The Deferred Compensation Plan, um, there's a committee and the plan is governed, um, sorry. The plan is governed by the Deferred Compensation Committee and there are named fiduciaries on the committee. And there's a high legal bar for fiduciaries and that's to act solely in the best interest of the plan participants. So it's in that capacity that the committee selects and they monitor the investment options that we offer. As they negotiate plan fees and they monitor the work of the plan record keeper and financial advisor. So talking again about the governance structure of the committee, it's set by operating guidelines. And there are four named fiduciaries who are the voting members on the committee. And for the city, we have the Chief Administrative Officer, the Human Resources and Risk Management Administrator and the City Finance Administrator. And then the Fire Authority, his name's a Fire Chief, is their voting member to the committee. The committee meets quarterly and we do have regular attendance by the union groups and by some of our non-represented employees. Uh, the committee maintains due diligence of the plan with an investment advisor. So the standard for fiduciary responsibility is to act as a prudent expert. And if you don't have that expertise and you need to go out and you need to hire somebody who does, and our committee members, they don't, they don't meet that definition of a prudent expert. So we contract with CAP Trust. CAP Trust is our financial advisor and they are our co-fiduciary to the plan. And they advise the committee and, uh, they attend our quarterly meetings. They provide us analysis on how our investments are doing. They help us to understand how the markets are doing. They also assist us with regulatory compliance and they conduct the fiduciary training for our voting members.
And I'm sorry, uh, could you go back to the other slide, Kelsey?
So some other points here about the committee. They base their work on an, on an investment policy statement and they have operating guidelines. So the investment policy statement, um, that's a written statement with a goal of having a diverse array of investments to choose from. And it's the core document that the committee will reference when they're making decisions about the investments. And they also, the operating guidelines, um, they function as a charter. So they provide the structure and the responsibilities for the committee. So the investment options that we offer, they encompass a broad range of risk and return characteristics. And our portfolio, we include target date funds, core funds and a brokerage window. And the target date funds, they're managed by Vanguard and they're the default investment for our plan. And with target date funds, the employee chooses the investments based on the approximate year that they plan to retire. And then the fund's risk portfolio will change over time to gradually reduce the risk as the person gets closer to retirement. And so that way, as you get closer to retirement, you have a little bit less risk and volatility in the stock market preserving your assets in the plan. And a majority of our plan participants are invested in the target date funds. And we also offer core funds in each of the investment categories that you can see listed on the slide. These funds provide our participants, that's an opportunity for them to build their own portfolios. Um, and there are a variety of the investment options across the market segments. And that allows for people to build a diversified portfolio. And then we have the brokerage window and that's for people who are willing to take on a little bit more risk. That allows them to go outside the plan and invest in individual stocks. So not everybody takes advantage of that, but it is an option and really not too many people do. There are more fire authorities, a lot of the fire authority, uh, folks take that risk a little bit more and most of the city employees, like I said, are in the target date funds. So there are three fees that are charged to the Deferred Compensation Plan. We have administrative expenses that are paid to our financial investment advisor to CAP Trust. We have record keeping expenses that are paid to our record keeper and our record keeper is Tia. And then there are fees that are charged that are associated with the management of the individual funds. Um, and these fees are paid by the plan participants and it's drawn out of their accounts on a quarterly basis. So overall, the fees and expenses are really low for our, uh, Deferred Compensation Plan. When you compare that to the benchmark of other private and government plans that are our size. So on this slide, you can see the benchmark there on the right and the benchmark fee is just over a half a percent. Where the city's fees are just about, uh, a third of a percent. So these lower fees means that more money that participants keep in their retirement accounts. And that translates for our members being able to keep about two dollars more per one thousand dollar in their account compared to the benchmark. So we are really, really proud of the low fees that our plan has. And the committee works really hard to keep the fees low, to keep more retirement assets in our, uh, participants' accounts. And here we have, um, a dashboard view of the deferred comp plan for two thousand twenty-two. So total plan assets at the end of the year were a hundred and twenty-one point seven million dollars. And this was a decrease of about fifteen point six percent from the prior year. But contributions were up about one point seven from the prior year. So even though market conditions have been down, people are still putting into their retirement savings. So that's really encouraging to see. Uh, we had eleven hundred and forty-five participants with account balances in two thousand twenty-two. And the employee contributions to the plan were about fifty point six percent of the total contributions for the year, uh, with city contributions coming in at forty-two percent. So there was just over seven percent of the year's contributions coming in from rollovers. So employees are rolling over qualified retirement funds that they might have elsewhere into the city's plan. We do outreach and provide education to our employees on the importance of saving for retirement and on what their investment options are. And employee gate engagement last year was really high. Tia reported that we had seventy-three employees participating in their education sessions. Um, and we offer those, um, we actually, people can call and, or send an email to try to hook up with a financial advisor or through our SharePoint link. We actually have, um, Tia who keeps consistently adding dates for our, uh, members to go ahead and participate in education session. And so we actually saw a doubling of people, um, participating, like I said, seventy-three in two thousand twenty-two, which was double from the previous year. And investment education is what the members were most interested in. There were over three hundred employee, employees who increased their contributions last year. So again, it's really good to see that we have so many employees that are engaged in thinking about their retirement and saving for the future. Probably should have said that the other way around. They're engaged in saving for their retirement future.
We're getting short on time, so we can just do questions at the end, at the very end.
You bet.
Great.
We will move on to the health plan overview. So the city offers a self-funded health plan that's administered through healthcare management administrators or HMA. The plan includes stop-loss insurance. So any individual claims that exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the year, the stop-loss vendor is going to pay the amounts over that. So the city's obligation ends at that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. And we must carry that stop-loss insurance because we want to protect the city from high-dollar claims. Um, and alternate to the self-funded plan with HMA, um, we offer coverage through Kaiser Permanente. Uh, we have about eighteen employees right now who have chosen Kaiser as their medical option. The self-funded plan is governed by the Renton Employees Health Plan Board. And the main roles of the Health Plan Board, they set the plan design of the covered benefits and they set the premium contribution rates. And those rates are set based on actuarially projected future claim expenses, other plan expenses, and how much is in the reserves. There are three voting members on the Health Plan Board. We have one representative from the city, which is the Chief Administrative Officer, and then also, uh, the two union presidents. Uh, the premium cost share is divided between the city and the employees. And that's, um, bargained in the collective bargaining agreements. And the current premium split is ninety-one percent employer contribution and nine percent employee contribution. Um, and then we have other health and wellbeing benefits that we offer beyond the medical plans. So we have life and long-term disability insurance. We have an employee assistance plan, flexible spending accounts and an employee wellness program. We had two plan design changes to the HMA plan this year. Uh, the Health Plan Board voted to add a behavioral health network to an existing MD Live telehealth service that we offer. Um, and that network provides an additional resource for our employees to access mental health providers. And mental health providers have been in high demand and there's really long wait times to try to see somebody right now. Um, and so this service will allow our employees to be able to make a telephone video appointment with a qualified, uh, mental health provider within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Um, scheduling a traditional in-person appointment right now could take you weeks. So it's a real advantage to be able to, um, try to access those services on a broader network. Uh, the board voted to cover, uh, provide coverage for cochlear implants. That had been a plan exclusion before. Most insurances cover this benefit, um, which is, it assists the deaf to hear. And it's mostly children who benefit from the cochlear implants. Um, there were no changes in the, uh, benefits for dental or vision for this year. And I did want to mention that the Health Plan Board, they're very proactive on cost-saving measures. And so when they're looking and careful, uh, looking at these, um, design changes, they look carefully at projected cost impacts of any benefit changes that they make to the plan. And they balance that with the goal of providing meaningful benefits and high-quality benefits for our employees and their families. Um, so these next few slides will provide information about the expenses to the health plan and cost trends over time. My understanding is there was an inquiry at Finance Committee meeting to get, um, the full, kind of a full picture of the healthcare costs. And so I hope to cover that here in these next few slides. In addition to claim expenses, uh, which we'll review coming up, we have vendor administrative fees that are an expense to the self-funded plan. These are fees that are renewed annually and they're fixed cost to the plan for the year and they're approved by council. The HMA administrative fee, that includes the claim processing, um, access to the region's preferred provider, medical and dental work, uh, dental networks, Cobra Administration and also access to the MD Live Behavioral and Medical Networks that, uh, I had mentioned. Uh, the increase for the HMA rates this year was three point six percent. Kaiser Permanente, uh, that's the premium cost for that medical plan option and those rates increased five point eight two percent. The stop-loss, uh, rate increased nine percent this year. And Costco Health Solutions, Costco Health Solutions is our pharmacy benefit manager. And their administrative fee includes claims processing, approval of the drug formulary and access to participating pharmacy networks. Um, and their fee is three percent per year and that's by contract. So in addition to the administration fees from the vendors of the premium rates that are approved by the Health Plan Board are the cost to the city and the employees to fund the self-funded plan. Um, and the increases in the premium for medical this year was one point eight percent. Dental was point four percent and four point six percent for vision. And on our other benefit offerings, um, we've actually had a rate pass for the past three years, which means that they have not raised their fees to us in three years. And the wellness program, that's, um, internal budgeted program. And so this slide provides for you a visual representation of the vendor administrative fees that we were just reviewing. And that way you can see year to year how those costs compare. And so costs over time have climbed upward with inflation, general increases in healthcare costs, but they still remain relatively stable and predictable for us. Uh, the stop-loss premiums, you can see in two thousand twenty-one and in two thousand twenty-two, the, there was significant spike in the premium cost to us, uh, for this insurance. And that's really attributable, um, as Kelsey was mentioning, unfavorable hard market conditions for stop-loss insurance during those years. But the good news is that the premium rate for us in two thousand twenty-three, it was only a nine percent increase. So we saw a, a, a really nice de- decrease this year. And our plan's favorable loss ratios contributed to the carrier offering us the lower rate this year. And only a handful of their customers were actually offered a single-digit increase. So we thought that was a really good, uh, really great deal that we got this year. And stop-loss premiums, they are a large dollar amount, but they represent less than ten percent of our plan expenses. Um, and stop-loss insurance for the medical plan, we do market that every year with our broker. And so we do annually look to get the best rate we can on stop-loss insurance. Um, so moving on from the administrative expenses to the plan, here we have an overview of the claim expenses for two thousand twenty-two. So when you're taking.
I'm sorry, we got about five minutes left.
Okay, um, so the paid claims ratio for the medical plan. So basically the money that we fund in the plan and then the money we have to spend out on the premium or on claims. We had ninety-three point six percent paid claim ratio. So for every dollar we put into the plan, we spent ninety-three point six cents. And you can see how that compared to two thousand twenty-one. So overall in two thousand twenty-two, we paid out, uh, less in total expenses than we funded in premiums. We had two claimants hit the two hundred and fifty thousand individual stop-loss limit. Um, and the plan was reimbursed a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for that. The pharmacy claims in two thousand twenty-two, they were represented twenty-one percent of total claims. Um, that was up a little bit from two thousand twenty-one. There were two large claimants in two thousand twenty-two and there were none in two thousand twenty-one. So for dental, you can see that for every dollar we put into the dental, we spent ninety-six cents. And then for vision, we actually spent six men, six cents more than for every dollar we put in. Enrollment in claims for the two thousand twenty-two, we had six hundred and twenty-five enrollees, uh, employees enrolled with fourteen hundred and forty total members, which is the employee and their eligible dependents that they've enrolled on the plan. And HMA processed thirty thousand seven hundred and four claims. Uh, this slide, um, shows us year over year, how much we spent per employee per month. So back to two thousand twelve, you can see that we spent about thirteen hundred dollars a month in total costs. And now that's around sixteen hundred and fifty, fifty dollars. So the costs have increased over time, is health insurance again generally increases. But over the past ten years, the costs on average really have an increase significantly. And one reason that our plan does so well is because our employees, they value the health plan benefits that we offer and they're really good consumers of our healthcare spend. They're proactive in getting their health screenings, they're compliant with management of chronic conditions, chronic health conditions, and that helps enable us to keep the cost down. Um, in looking at the plan financials, um, for the self-funded plan, for the target reserves to begin two thousand twenty-three, we look at the amount of the expected claims, um, that were expected to have for the year, which is about twelve and a half million dollars. And then we set our target reserves at forty percent of that, so a little over five million dollars. And the change in the reserves in two thousand twenty-two, at the beginning of the year, the fund had six point one million dollars in it. And then when you add in the premiums that were funded in, subtract out what we paid out in expenses and we get a little bit back to add in from the, uh, reimbursement from stop-loss. The change in reserves, it went up two hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. So our reserve balance to begin the year, uh, two thousand twenty-three is at fifty-one percent or about one point three million dollars more than the, we would require in our target reserves amount. And then on our last side, last slide, um, what you're seeing here is the, what the reserve balance look like over time. The blue bars represent how much money is in the reserve balance each month. And the red line represents the state's legal requirement. Um, we need to hold a minimum of thirty percent in reserves under WAC regulations for solvency of self-insured medical benefits. But because expenses can be volatile and is good stores to the plan, the Health Plan Board targets reserves to be closer to forty percent of expected claims and that's represented on the graph by the green line. So the reserves are going to go up and down each month. Those blue bars will move up and down each month depending upon whether actual expenses are higher or lower than the premium contributions that went into the plan. And the chart also is showing us where rate holidays have occurred. A rate holiday is where employees don't pay any premiums into the plan and neither does the city. And this is a common practice that's provided for in the health. And this is a common practice that's provided for in the health board's uh, adopted funding guidelines. It allows the board to consider a rate holiday when the reserves grow too large. Or the opposite of that, the other way around. If the reserves were to drop below the target, then the board would consider a mid-year premium increase to get some funding in there. Um, and the board approved a rate holiday at the end of twenty twenty-two, which brought the reserves down from a high of about sixty percent in the latter half of the year, down to the current fifty-one percent. Um, and that's the presentation, and thank you very much. And what questions do you have on either the deferred comp or the health plan?
Any questions from counsel?
You're not asked a question today, it's running. I have no questions, I'm, I'm joking.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned, we'll reconvene in ten minutes.